The March 8th, 2006 Regular Board Meeting of the Men are Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Yes. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you.
I would like to welcome everyone to the March 8th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Men are Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda Systems Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and the chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 in Manner and Channel 96.22 in Manner on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Manner, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Approval of the minutes? So moved.
Second.
And I would note that we discovered one type of graphical error on page 368. It was incorrect phone number was listed in one of the transfers that the board approved. We took the liberty of correcting that prior to submitting the minutes for your consideration.
Is that for the regular meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
The regular meeting of February 9th.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
I believe I have to abstain. I wasn't at the March 1st meeting, so we're doing those together, so...
Yes. Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes. Any hearing of the public on agenda items only. Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I am recommending approval consent agenda item 5A1 through 5A4 this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, we have several outstanding students that are going to be recognized this evening who have excelled scholastically, and we have quite a group, and so we're very proud to honor these students. This is cardinal pride at its best. We're going to start this evening with Ms. Miller and Mr. Porter to recognize our Spelling Bee competition winners.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Again this year, we want to recognize our spelling winners for the grade levels, and these students were eligible for National Scripps Spelling Bee Competition. If these students are here this evening, we would ask you to enter the stage to my right, your left, and accept your award from Mrs. Miller, and stay up here on stage until all of our spelling champions, please, have been recognized. We are also going to recognize this evening the alternates if they are here in attendance. Our fifth grade winner, Ethan Eskins, from Orchard Hollow Elementary School. Our sixth grade, our alternate, Emma Radzowitz, from Ridge Middle School. Our sixth grade champion, Owen Keller, from Shore Middle School. Our seventh grade champion, Nathan Rolpheus, from Ridge Middle School. Our eighth grade alternate, runner-up, James Rosky, from Shore Middle School. And our eighth grade champion, Sarah Ramaya, from Memorial Middle School. And I also want to recognize, while they're up here, we had a district-wide competition then that combined all of these grade levels, and we had a runner-up and a champion. And then our district champion, who's not able to be with us this evening, would be Sarah Ramaya from Memorial Middle School. We could still give her a round of applause, please. And congratulations to all of these outstanding spellers for mentor schools. Thank you. Our Cardinal Challenge is our annual academic competition, and that was held last month among our three middle schools. And for the third year in a row, Ridge Middle School prevailed as the district champion. So congratulations to Ridge. At this time, we're going to introduce their advisor and the members of the team who are here with us this evening. If you two could enter the stage this direction, accept your award, please, from Mrs. Miller, and shake the hands of the board members, and remain on stage until all of your teammates have been called up. Our advisor or coach for the team, Ms. Brittany Martoni. And sixth grade participants from the team, Rachel Johnson. Sophia Kraska. Brian Perusik. Randall Saley. Colin Sorge. Olivia Trem. Our seventh grade team members, Sarah Freeman. Alexander Lippert. Elise Provident. Nathan Rolpheus. Salvatore Solano. And our eighth grade team members, David Gonya. Paige Johnson. Janek Patel. Luke Risco. Andrew Smith. And Nicholas Smith. Let's have a collective round of applause for our Ridge students. A job well done. Our eighth graders from Ridge, if you think about it, with three years in a row, they have not experienced a loss in that competition, so that's quite a feat. Special congratulations to those eighth graders. A little bit of pressure on six and seven now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Very impressed by all the, all three schools. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and those students that were just up here, I hope you watched the Star Wars trilogy again, because we had some little bit of problems on some of those questions, and Mr. Frank would be upset with me if I didn't mention that, so I'm hoping we, I hope we're back on course. I also want to thank Mr. Wade for being the emcee and does a really good job with asking the questions, so thank you for that. Okay, moving on. It's my pleasure tonight, we get to recognize our outstanding academic achievement of our National Merit finalists. Unfortunately, one of our recipients, Vishnu Nastala, is unable to be here this evening, but we are going to ask Mr. Wade, along with Ms. Miller, to make the presentations for the students who could make it tonight.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, if I could ask Sachi Carson, Logan Leek, and Ragav Malik to join me on stage. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition of scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, a test which serves as an initial screen for over 1.5 million entrants each year, and by meeting published program and entry participation requirements. Of the 1.5 million entrants, some 50,000 with the highest PSAT selection index scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Semi-finalist Scholarship Program. In September, these high scores were notified as semi-finalists. We'd like to recognize tonight our semi-finalists, Sachi Carson and Logan Leek, who are with us on stage, who have been selected of four of our students of the 15,000 National Merit finalists. It's quite an honor and distinction for students to go from 1.5 million top students in the country to the 15 percent, and we have four here at Manner High School this year. We're very proud of Sachi and Logan, and I know that they'll continue to do great things beyond the walls of Manner High School, and wish them best of luck as they continue on. Great job, you guys.
All right, next, Madam President, members of the board, March is Youth Art Month. If you haven't done so, please take a look at the awesome artwork on stage after the meeting. Every year, I'm very impressed by the talent of our kids. I want to thank our kids, too. We have pictures, the board members, and Mr. Wilson and I have some of the artwork on display here as well. Can't thank you enough for that. Mr. Wade, Ms. Kane, and Ms. Miller are going to make the presentations to these students.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Ms. Wilson. As you know, we have an amazing fine art program led by fantastic teachers and students here at Manner High School. This year is no different, and I would ask the Manner High School Art Department Chair, Michelle Kane, to join me on stage to recognize our amazing art students and present them with the awards from the 2016 art shows that they participated in.
Thank you, Mr. Wade, Madam President, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, members of the board. March is Youth Art Month. We are recognizing a few of our secondary menor schools artists for their exemplary work in national, state, and local competitions. I would like the students to come forward when they are called and remain on the stage as most of you have artwork that has been recognized at many levels, including local, state, and national. The first recognition we'd like to give is to the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards winners. Congratulations to Senior Ryan Sirmak, who received a gold key. And timely enough, we're also giving these students their actual keys that we just received from Scholastics. Shauna Leganki received a gold key and two silver keys. Scholastics has been around a long time. I don't know if you're aware, you may have heard of an artist named Andy Warhol. He was actually part of the Scholastics competition. Gold keys are only awarded to the top 5 to 7 percent of all entries nationally. Gold key winners will be invited to a ceremony in September and move on to national scholarship competition. House of Representatives student exhibition, Senior Shannon O'Donnell, if you would join us. Shannon is representing District 61 at the State House in Columbus, where her work will hang for one year. This exhibit is a new collaboration between the Ohio House of Representatives, the Ohio Arts Council, and the Ohio Art Education Association. Shannon also received a silver key in Scholastics. Graphic Arts Council of Cleveland-Benny Awards is a local competition for high school students where graphic arts work in the categories of printing and graphic art. The competition offers students their first exposure to review of their work by panel of area professionals. Congratulations to Senior Megan Fortney for winning second place. Megan also received two silver keys in Scholastics this year. And then our local show you may be aware of, held at Lakeland Community College in the gallery every year, is the Lake and Jaga County Secondary Art Awards. Manner students took top awards in this juried exhibit in February. We would like to congratulate our students for having their artwork selected from over 700 pieces, and the big winners include, and she's not here, but Rachel Goldstein was a talent grant winner. She's in grade 12. Rachel, you have a copy, some of you have a copy of Rachel's piece. Enjoy that. Christine Busey was a talent grant winner and best of ninth grade. Megan Baranski, best of show, ninth through 12th grade. Cassie Berger won best of 11th grade. Brianna Yee, best of eighth grade. She's from Ridge. Natalie Uppolds, best of grade seven, and she's also from Ridge. And then someone who'll be a very famous painter one day, Nick Beebe, won a judges award, and some of you have a copy of his painting. Enjoy. So one more addition, I just wanted to mention that our state judging for the governor's show happened last weekend, and we have several of the students standing up here right now who will have their pieces going to Columbus this weekend. So I wanted you to know that Shauna, Ryan, Rachel, Christine, and Megan all have work heading down to state's this weekend, so wish them luck.
Our students' work is simply amazing. I have the privilege of walking past it on a regular basis as I go out into the building through my, the main hallway I walk out, and it's amazing to see the work they do, especially when you have no artistic talent like myself. It's, makes you a little more self-conscious as how well that they can do things. And I look forward to the art show that's coming up in the spring. So if you get a chance to come out and see all our students' work, I would encourage you to come out to that. It's a great show put on by our art department. It's a show for our students' accomplishments.
Madam President, members of the board, we're always happy to recognize the achievements of our staff as well, so I, after acknowledging the students, the next best part of our board meetings is acknowledging our staff members. Aside from parents and guardians and grandparents in the lives of our kids, our teachers are the reason our kids are as successful as they are. At this time, we get to recognize one of our high school teachers. I'm going to let Mr. Wade make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to invite Mr. Rotar to the podium to help me in recognizing our very own 2016 Ohio High School Speech League Coaches Hall of Fame inductee, Mrs. Amy Rotiger. If Mrs. Rotiger would also join us on stage at this time, please. Nothing like having to give a speech to a Hall of Fame speech coach as she comes up on stage. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Rotiger on her accomplishment and thank her for her years of service to our students and this organization. Her skill first before, her skill before score philosophy for this activity speaks to how Mrs. Rotiger looks at most things. It's her mission in and out of the classroom to help all students succeed, and she works tirelessly to ensure that they do. She's a consummate professional who is dedicated to preparing all our students for life in the 21st century beyond the walls of Manner High School. I have the utmost respect and admiration for her, and I'm proud to have the opportunity to work with her on a daily basis. I would now ask Mr. Rotar to come and say a few words about Mrs. Rotiger as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, Madam President, other members of the board. If I may. I'd like to thank all of you for giving Amy the recognition she deserves for her entry into the Ohio High School Speech Coaches Hall of Fame. I can think of no one who deserves it more. When Mr. Wade asked me if I'd like to say anything, I said, "Great idea," and then he said, "Two minutes should probably be enough." I'm in trouble. I don't have time to tell you the fantastic job she's done with many of her students and how well they placed at tournaments. I don't have time to tell you what she did regarding an event called Congressional Debate, which she took from a know-nothing event and made the most popular event in Ohio High School Speech. It is phenomenal what she's done, almost single-handedly. But if I may reiterate what Mr. Wade said in a slightly more informal manner, Ms. Rotiger's basic philosophy is one of skills, not scores. Now, please don't misunderstand me. She does not want to, she doesn't like to lose. Okay, trust me, she doesn't like to lose. She loves winning, but she also realizes that sometimes winning doesn't come with a trophy or a ribbon. Sometimes it's the development of the student himself or herself that really matters. And if you want to see this in its purest form, take a bus trip with us some Saturday to a tournament. On the way back, when students are looking at their ballots, seeing how they did or didn't do as the case may be, Ms. Rotiger is the absolute epitome of positive thinking and positive attitude. She takes the students aside one by one, looks at what they've done, and if there is a speck of anything positive there, this woman will find it. It is amazing how good she is. She talks to them, she questions them, she says, "Are you doing, how are you doing with this? Did you do better than you did last week? Did you learn something, including something about yourself?" And if you found that you did better than last week, regardless of where your standing is in the overall group, if you found you did better than last week, if you found you learned something, and also if you realized that you enjoyed it enough to try again next week, her day has been a success. The vast majority of the times, our students have found enough to say, "Let's give this thing another try," and they come back. Long after the Saturday morning, 7:00 AM bus trips to some far-flung high school are a memory, and long after students' memories, excuse me, ribbons and trophies are stuffed in a box somewhere in mom and dad's attic, till mom and dad decide it's time to ship the hardware out with their children as they leave home, Ms. Rotiger's influence on students will remain a constant. She has ingrained in them a desire to do well, to trust themselves, to believe in themselves. She does a fantastic job. In that regard, it is the confidence they have in themselves when they stand before an audience, whether it be a one, 100, or 1,000. That confidence that they have will stay with them all their lives and follow them into any profession they choose. Amy Rotiger, I can think of no one in the state of Ohio who deserves this award more than you. Congratulations.
You can't put a speech and debate coach this close to a microphone and then ask her not to say anything, so just two quick things. The first is a hearty thanks to Mr. Miller and Mr. Wade for all the ways they support this program. We feel so lucky to have their support. I was inducted into the Hall of Fame this past weekend at our state tournament, which had a Star Wars theme. So we brought Mr. Miller a T-shirt. Speak with force, right? So I wanted to say that. And then the second thing is a public service announcement. Mr. Miller always makes fun of me when I do this, but I don't care. Students who were recognized for spelling bee prowess and Cardinal Challenge awesomeness and their parents, because they might not remember, please remember the words "speech and debate" when you get to Manner High School. We would most definitely like you to be a part of our team. Thanks so much.
I just have to say real quickly, the speech and debate team is a force to be reckoned with. And if you ever have the opportunity to see and hear the students in action and to see the well-oiled machine of a competition as it flows through the building, it's, it's so impressive. A lot of things that our children get involved in in high school will be very enjoyable and meaningful to them, but this is one of those kind of activities that not only is enjoyable and meaningful, but really improves the quality of the life you might lead, the power of the spoken word. We all know what that means. So, thank you.
We have a lot to be proud of tonight. Congratulations to Mrs. Rotiger and to the students tonight. At this point of our board meeting, you are more than welcome to stay, but we're going to take a two- or three-minute recess. So those of you who have things at home, homework, other activities and things, this is your cue, but again, you're welcome to stay. So we'll reconvene in about two or three minutes. All right, at this time, we're going to go back in session. Mr. Lynch will give us an update on our Straight A Grant initiatives. Mr. Lynch? Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I again want to thank you for the opportunity to give me a chance to update you on the progress of our Straight A Grant at this month's board meeting. Earlier this evening, I shared the presentation with you. As I challenged myself over a year and a half ago to each time I present in front of the board, I want to try to find a different tool to use. So today's tool is actually a tool that is used by many of our teachers, not just at the high school, but also in the middle school, and I think even some elementary teachers use it as well, called BlendSpace. And the power of this tool truly comes in the opportunity for a teacher to organize their lesson, their content, and then be able to have the students access that content at any time. And then while the students are accessing that content during the class, it frees up that teacher to be able to go work with an individual student or a small group of students as they are working through that content. So you, you have this link in your email, so you can follow along. The nice thing about it as well is if you, as a group or as a class, you can add comments to the side, ask a question where other students could respond, or the instructor can respond. We're not going to get into those finer details in tonight's presentation, but it is a very cool, free resource for our teachers to use. So I want to start off by just bringing up that tomorrow is a big day in that we have the state of Ohio coming to do our site review for the Straight A Grant. And I do want to touch base and go back. On this website is a summary of our grant from over a year and a half ago, and it was kind of nice to review and kind of read just a quick summary of what we were expecting with this grant over a year and a half ago, and looking at it, and I'm not going to read it, you can read it if you so choose or click on it later, but this is just the framework of what we have done. We have done so much more, but it's nice to read each one of those objectives and know that we have reached everything that we set out for over a year and a half ago. whether it's through professional development, meetings, or other business activities that have been going on at Paradigm. So Paradigm continues to be a busy place, but we are starting to hit a little bit of a lull. There are, there have been days where we only have three or four meetings at Paradigm instead of constant meetings going on from 8:00 until 3:00. And so we are continuing to work to find business partners to come in to use the space. We have had three or four businesses already in the last couple of months use the space for meetings, and we're gonna continue to search out those partners to be able to use the space. Our classroom renovations are, 62 of them are complete. We have been able to secure some savings through some other areas in the grant where we didn't spend as much as expected, and that's allowing us to complete three additional classrooms. We are working on completing one Family Consumer Science Classroom and two World Language Classrooms. So that'll take our total classrooms up to, when all is said and done, come June, to 65 total classrooms in the high school. One thing I want to mention about our new learning spaces is we've worked hard. Mr. Wade really takes student feedback, and he runs a principals advisory group that he meets with quarterly. And, you know, one of the things that, as we met with the group in January, is we talked a lot about the new learning spaces. And with any new learning spaces, I think, come challenges of how do we use those spaces best? And so, working with not only the student advisory groups, but then taking that information back to faculty council, they have worked to kinda establish some clear expectations from what goes on in the hub to what goes on into our new digital learning labs, and make sure that those expectations are clear to the students and the staff. So working together with faculty council, those have been established and are working on getting those communicated out to all of the students and the staff. Another point that I wanted to update the Board on is our progress with our online coursework. So there are two major online course areas. The first is the Pearson Online Electives. And so in, with the Pearson Online Electives, we had over 350 students participate and take a Pearson elective during the first semester, and this shows you the completion rate for the fall. So we had 94, just over 94% of our students on track. We had just under 2% who were behind, and just under 4%, which would be considered serious concern. So those are looking at kids who are scoring Ds or Fs in those courses. And so when you compare this to a traditional, we certainly saw a little bit more success on these Pearson Online courses than our traditional courses. But yet, I think that's been some of the work that our counselors and that our unit principals have done to make sure that those students are finding success. To give you an example, every week, we receive a Pearson report, and on that Pearson report, it lists every student who is taking an online course. And it very clearly marks, not only with color code, but words, of students who are on track, students who are behind, students where there are serious concerns. And it gives us, from the counselors to the administrators, as well as to Ms. Hayward, who is our classroom assistant, who is on the second floor of the hub, the opportunity to check in with those students. And Ms. Hayward does an excellent job of going and talking with those students and saying, "Hey, I'm recognizing that, I'm seeing you're falling behind." And she keeps a spreadsheet of what the kids say back to her, like, "Oh, yeah, I know, I'm behind, I need to catch up on that." So it's that constant, I think, check-in. When we set out to do these online courses, we said, "We need to have our kids be successful." So I think we have put in a lot of checks along the way to make sure we're just not releasing them on these online courses, that they have a set place to go, which is the second floor of the hub, but they also have adult interaction to make sure that they are holding their end of the bargain with regards to these online courses. The other key area is our online health course. And as you remember, every single one of our 10th graders are taking an online health course. And these are the results, the grade results, from the first semester. I would like to point out, you can see a significant drop in students who earned an A from 13, 14, and 14, 15. You can see that there were significantly less students who are receiving an A. But I'd also like to point out, there are significantly less students who are receiving a D or an F. And again, I think that comes to, one, it is for many of these students, the first time that they are taking an online course. I'll give you a perfect example. Mr. Luciano and I were walking through the high school today, and like we do often, we like to check in with students to see how they were doing. So we stopped on the second floor of the hub, and we're talking to some students who are taking the Pearson Online Course, as well as the Health Online Course. And we talked to one student who was just getting ready to take her health final, and we asked her, "Well, what did you think about the health course?" And she said, very honest, "You know what? I didn't like it." And we said, "All right, tell us what you didn't like about it." She's like, you know, "I just, it really made me think, and it was a difficult course where I really had to work hard." We asked her what her score was, she says, "Well, I'm at a 90% right now, so I need to do well on this final." And she said, "But you know what it showed me? It showed me that I'm not sure online learning is for me." And again, I think that's one of our goals that we set out for, is that we want every student at Mentor High School to leave here and have that knowledge. We want them to say, "Yeah, you know what? Online learning, I can be successful with it as I move on to college or even into the job." Or, "You know what? Online learning was difficult for me, I've gotta learn some new skills to make myself successful." So I thought that conversation with that student was very poignant and very, you know, it gave us a lot of information into regards to why we're offering these courses to our The next area I'd like to update the Board on is with regards to professional development. Ms. Bond has put together a fantastic survey, not just for our high school, but for all of our staff members with regards to where are we heading with, in the area of professional development. And one of the clear things, we had 113 high school staff members complete the survey, asking them how, what area of professional development they would like. And an overwhelming, clear, first two choices were blended learning and PBL, Project-Based Learning. So we have, we are putting plans together for May and June to be offering project-based learning training for all of our staff, three-day training. And then we are also planning for the entire district, K-12, our own Blended Learning Conference. And so, as many of you have gone to conferences, we're excited to really be offering our first conference here in Mentor. We're looking, tentative dates right now of August 9th, 10th, and 11th, but we want to be able to put that out there for our staff and even potentially open it up to other districts as well, depending on how many staff we end up having at that conference. Another thing I want to mention is, you know, one big piece of this grant was the expectation that we go out and share with other school districts what we are trying to accomplish here in our district. And over the last two months, it has been very busy. Today, we just had another visit that's not even on my list, from John F. Kennedy Catholic School in Warren. But we've had, just in the last two months, we've had Mayfield, Brunswick, Chardon, Orange, Independence, Ursuline College, the Diocese of Youngstown, Stowe Monroe Falls, Cuyahoga ESC, Parma School District, Olentangie, Meta Solutions from Columbus, River Valley, Strongsville, Fairview Park. That's just the districts that have visited us in the last two months. And so it's been a great opportunity, because when they come, we always phrase it as, "We want to hear what you're doing as well." So we treat these oftentimes day-long visits as our opportunity to not only share what we're doing as a district, but to also pick up some of the things that they are doing in their districts as well. This is just a sample of one of our days in February, that we had a few of those school districts here, and kinda give you a rundown of how we spend those days, spending some time at the high school in Paradigm, but also visiting our elementary schools and middle schools. Next, I want to talk a little bit about student feedback. Again, as we go through this process, I think it's real important that we listen to our students. So it's not just those informal conversations, but it's also really collecting day-to-day data from our kids. And so we are trying to put a lot of things in place, working with our grant evaluators, to really measure what we are doing. So one of the things is that every day, there are anywhere from 10 to 15 classes that receive a survey around one of five areas. Those five areas are motives, performance, I'm gonna forget a couple of them, so I want to, motives, performance, motivation, performance, interests, methods, and environment. So using Schoology, those students receive a four-question survey. Here's a sample of two of the questions that are on that survey. And from that survey, they're able to finish it at the end of their class. It takes about one to two minutes, and it gives us so much information about what they just experienced in that last 50 minutes. And so for this one, for instance, this is, we have over 220 responses, so this is two days' worth of responses. We've been doing this for three weeks. And we rotate days, so let's say during this month, Monday, we're just concentrating on math. Tuesday is ELA. Wednesday is social studies. Thursday is science, and Friday are all of those non-core classes. So we pick randomly 10 to 15 classes. We send out a survey through Schoology. The kids get the assignment in their Schoology course. They finish, they fill out that survey in the last two, one to two minutes of class, and then we're able to compile all of that data. So it gives us great information from the students of how they're feeling, their courses are going. So over, excuse me, over time, I think that we're hoping that it will really show us some of the progress that we're making in the classroom. The other thing I want to mention is, we have just finished putting a survey together to really get student feedback on their online courses through Pearson and Health. And so that was just sent out today to all students who completed that course, and we're going to really look closely at that and get some, see some trends hopefully, and some maybe adjustments that we can make with regards to the Pearson Online Courses and the Health Online Course. And then the last thing I mentioned earlier in the presentation, I think Mr. Wade does an awesome job just being out daily, as his entire administrative staff, out for students to talk to, but he really makes sure he has those important conversations through his principal advisory. And, you know, we tape those and we let our grant evaluators watch those as well, to look for trends and comments that kids are making. And so we're constantly looking to our kids to kinda drive where we are taking the balanced and blended learning. Up, early. So the last thing, you know, Mr. Miller, he's looking at me, I didn't even tell him I put this in there. Look, he's giving me a... So the last thing that I want to touch on is, we have been working with the Department of Education with our other Straight A Grant that we have received, and the focus is not really on the high school, we're focusing in on the 7th and 8th grade social studies. And it has to do with Go Open. And so as we were leaving last week, that conference that we attended on Go Open, you know, I asked Mr. Miller, "Is this something that you would like me to update the Board on?" And he said, "Sure." And I thought to myself, "Well, who better to update the Board than Mr. Miller himself?" So this is just a short minute on Go Open. When I watch this, I'm like, "I can't, I can't do it better than Mr. Miller." So I just figured I would let him talk.
Hello, and thank you for joining us here at the Go Open Exchange. My name's Matt Miller, Superintendent of Mentor Public Schools near Cleveland, Ohio. We're pleased to have the opportunity to share our blended learning and openly licensed educational resources journey with you today. When we first heard of the Go Open initiative through the Future Ready Program, we were very excited, because this initiative fits right into our district's scope of innovative instruction, where teachers are infusing technology into the classroom to better meet the needs of each student on an individual level. We believe that all students, no matter where they're from, should have access to high-quality educational resources all of the time. That's why we see such a great value in the Go Open initiative. In the education world, we are lucky to be able to share resources and work together rather than compete with one another, because ultimately, we all want what's best for students, my students, your students, students across the country. Our Mentor Schools team is happy to have the opportunity to collaborate with you today as we work on creating the tools all students need to become self-directed, lifelong learners. Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Miller. You know, the thing about the Go Open that has me excited, and I think as we left the conference, as we start to really think about this, we look at the thousands and thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars that go to textbook companies, and we take a look at the phenomenal work that our teachers are doing with so many open and free resources with our students. And so we're going to step slowly and carefully, and we're excited to kinda venture in with our social studies teachers at 7th and 8th grade. And so we're going to be working with them in the last three months here in the school year to kinda see where we go starting next school year in just one course. And then we'll see where it goes from there. But working with school districts from across the country, working with our partners from the Cal, the California, and Wisconsin, it was great to meet with them and hear some of the things that they are doing. So I think it's a great opportunity for us as a district to kinda venture slowly and carefully into the world of open resources and how that can best meet the needs of our students, our staff, and as a district as a whole, really potentially creating some great cost savings. There is an article that talks about, this was just, article was released on February 26th, and it talks about how there are 14 states and the districts, you'll see Mentor being mentioned, but unfortunately, you will not see Ohio as one of the states. I'm sure Mr. Miller is going to have some influence over trying to get Ohio committed to this Go Open project. We just in the last week have been emailing back and forth with some folks from the Department of Education on this topic. So I think this is an exciting opportunity for our district, and at this time, that completes my Straight A presentation. I would certainly welcome any questions that you may have.
When you're looking for open resources, is there a way of assessing the credentials of those sources to make sure that you have valid choices?
Absolutely. We were actually partners in another Straight A Grant that we were trying to obtain with Ohio State University, where their whole purpose of the grant was the rubrics to evaluate open resources, as well as other resources. There are a lot of different avenues that we could take, but as we go forward as a district, we're going to certainly need to make some decisions of what specific rubrics are we going to use. There is a Quality Matters tool that allows you to assess not only specific resources, but full courses that are created, that we have staff members trained in our district already on. And so those are going to be things that we pick very carefully to make sure the resources are quality resources for our students.
And I'll jump in on that, too.
Sure.
I've told teachers this, and they've echoed it or probably said it more to me than I have to them, they were, teachers always have been pulling in resources from the outside to supplement what, you know, what they were doing in the classroom in conjunction with the textbook. This is just sort of the next phase of that.
Yep.
I see it that way. The other thing that's kind of interesting to me is, our kids and our teachers are probably more excited, the ones that are involved in the Cal project and some other issues, than probably we are. We're trying to like, you know, help them navigate through, but there's a lot of enthusiasm behind things like this.
What's going, well, first of all, all the health students finish, the online health students finish?
There are, there are still a few students that have extended time that are completing it from the first semester, so a very small amount of students still need to complete.
And then there were no students put on second semester? It was just like, health was to span the whole year?
No. So health is a semester course.
Right.
So we had 300, about 310, 310 to 315 the first semester, and a similar number the second semester. So we do have another round of students who started in January.
What's, are they going to be able to come back in the fall and finish? Are they gonna finish over the summer?
For the students who might struggle with this time, you know, I hope that number will be small, so I think as we address that, we will probably move it into the summer to address it. But I think we have made some minor adjustments in even how we presented the information to get, when we looked at our numbers last year, we met with students every two weeks to make sure that they were following a certain timeframe, is completing a chapter every two weeks, a unit every two weeks, to make sure that they had completion. When we were meeting with those students who were not making progress, we were meeting with, I would say, out of the 60 to 70 kids per period, we were meeting with anywhere from 20 to 22 to 24 students each period every two weeks. That number this semester has dropped drastically. When we're, Mr. McKnight has really taken the lead on that, our unit administrator, and he's looking at numbers in those periods that are sometimes three, five, six students. So the kids are doing a better job, because I think we've done a better job, as are the counselors and the administrators, to make sure that they had the information that they needed to be successful. So we're hoping that that number at the end is even less. I will, I will say, I think the summertime is an area that we are going to probably look at for those students, or do you think? When we're, Mr. McKnight has really taken the lead on that, our unit administrator, and he's looking at numbers in those periods that are sometimes three, five, six students. So, the kids are doing a better job, because I think we've done a better job, as are the counselors and the administrators, to make sure that they had the information that they needed to be successful. So, we're hoping that that number at the end is even less. I will, I will say, I think the summertime is an area that we are going to probably look at for those students, or do you think?
Not unless a student has an IEP that requests extended time.
And that's who we focused in on.
So, they'll take it when they come back in the fall?
Correct.
They'll just start up when they come back in the fall?
Yeah, they'll...
Like, if they don't finish, they'll...
Yeah, the student has, they'll get the grade that they earned at the end of the semester. So, if they have to come back, if they didn't complete it, they would, you know, they'd give an F, let's say, and then they'd come back and they'd do it again the following year because of the traditional class, but they wouldn't have to retake everything they did after or before they completed.
And that's what happened to the students who took it first semester? They got an F for the semester, and now they're like, taking it over again?
I believe, almost, I believe, I want to say, I'm almost ninety-five percent sure that all the kids that were not on IEP could finish on time.
Yes, that is correct.
They had come in their exams, they lost privileges of having open campus and things like that, and they had extended time. So, for example, yesterday, or last week, Mr. McKnight had only five kids, all said and done, who weren't on track. By the time that he told them that they had to have it done, or they would receive extended time on a Saturday or ASR to make extra time, they all hadn't finished before them. So, all those students now are currently on track.
Okay. Has there been any thought, and I don't know, maybe this is, like, those students have concern on the Pearson ones, those are all for elective, so it doesn't matter? Not that it doesn't matter, but it's an elective, it's not a graduation requirement, so the students have concern if they don't pass or don't finish, then they'll just take another elective?
Correct.
Okay. I have to say, I'm a little, I don't know, I have to think about this a little bit, but with all of the things and the responsibilities that our high school administrators already have, I'm not sure the online school should be one of them, too. But I have to think about that for a bit, because, we'll talk. I like the idea that as part of the grant evaluation, you're looking at how it's been implemented in terms of, you know, student content.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, a building is a building, and that's easy to see that it's beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
But, the other systemic changes where we're using Pearson to supplement students' learning opportunities, for example, I love the fact that there is an honest assessment, because everything has its pros and cons.
Sure.
And I even like the fact that you said, for some students, maybe they won't like online learning as an option, and it doesn't mean that they shouldn't have the opportunity to be exposed to it, to know that, because it is such a fundamental part of most baccalaureate programs anymore.
Absolutely.
But I do love that we're taking that time to look carefully and seeing, are there ways to adapt or modify the way it's being implemented so that we could do the best job we can do for students, and that they'll be as successful as possible? So, I like that very much. But, I thought overall, it looked like your success rate, so you, basically, you had no failures in the online Health?
Correct.
Which is pretty good.
I think there were a lot of checks and balances along the way that helped us with that, though. You know, I think it's through a lot of people's hard work that, to make sure that that has gotten done, so.
And the other thing is, you've made, the high school staff has made adjustments along the way. Oftentimes, you get in sort of ruts where if things aren't going well, people just say, "Oh, well, this is how we started, we're gonna finish it this way."
Right.
You guys have been flexible, the high school staff have been flexible in making adjustments.
Absolutely. And again, I think, not everything has started off, not everything is gonna go perfectly. I mean, we're venturing in the waters that we haven't ventured into before, and so, I think the staff and administration has been open to trying new ideas, and if they work, fantastic, but if they fail, I don't think we give up. I think we kinda search for a solution and see how we can make things work.
Right, 'cause if you're not open to being honest that there's parts that aren't working...
Absolutely, not everything is perfect.
Yeah, nothing is...
Absolutely. Nothing is, no.
And so, that honesty in looking at the whole program, I think, is probably the greatest thing you've accomplished.
Yeah, and I think the grant evaluators will do a good job of analyzing that data and really show for future years what our areas of focus can be, not only in the online courses, but in our traditional courses as well.
Absolutely. The other question I had in terms of site visits, when we have visitors or outside organizations, so I see that as two different things, one's educational, one's fundamentally, do we do that in just kind of a, an open reciprocal thing where there's no cost to our visitors? Or is there a cost involved?
There is not a cost. It is our way of sharing what we have received through this grant and be able to have groups come in to see some of the things that we're trying, but we treat it as a way, as I mentioned before, as to try to pick up ideas from other school districts as well. But it is reciprocal in the sense that we have gone to visit other school districts, and we'll continue to do that. Just about three weeks ago, we went down to Hilliard. There was a team of about eight to ten of us that took a day-long trip down to Hilliard, Ohio, to take a look at some of their online courses and the success that they have had. They have been running online courses for about ten years, many of them, seventy of them actually, that are teacher-created, and that's something that we want to move towards. And so, we, you know, we can also learn throughout this process. We wanna share, but we wanna learn as well.
And the last thing I was gonna ask regarding, you just leaned into that very nicely, what about staff creating their own content and coursework, you know?
It's where we wanna, it's where we're starting to explore, again, carefully, because I think taking on too much too quick, and so, we're trying to be very aware of that. Our staff has done an unbelievable job over the last two years with some tremendous changes throughout our high school. And so, we wanna be careful not to rush too quickly into that, but find maybe some volunteers who would be interested in trying it out, like we do with so much of our other training. We did project-based learning training in January, and Mr. Wade sent out an email to the staff. We only had forty spots, sent out an email to the staff asking for volunteers. Within six hours, we had over forty volunteers like that. And so, the staff has been quick to volunteer to try out new things, and I think that's the approach that we're gonna take when we start looking at some online courses created by our teachers, but we're gonna do so slowly and carefully.
Mike, I just wanna pick up on one thing that you mentioned, the outside businesses, we are charging them a...
We are charging the outside businesses that come in and rent in Paradigm. So, yes, that is a good point. So, we've had a few companies from Mentor come in. We do provide a discount for those Mentor communities. Anybody, I'll put a little plug out there. Anybody wanna rent Paradigm, you can contact us at the Paradigm Building, and so, we look forward to continuing to form some partnerships with businesses here in Mentor.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, Mr. Lynch, I'd like to add before you step down. This is exciting, and this is the future, and it's not all classroom, and it's not all online, but there are students that wanna do both. It's inventive, it's creative, it's competitive. Many of us have said, "We want to compete in the world of education," and that's how you maintain and you become and stay number one. We don't wanna fall back, and online education is part of the future. And so, to me, it's very exciting, and I just wanna reinforce that direction and so noted. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, appreciate that, Mr. Stone.
You and the team, and all the teachers who get involved. It's not just you, obviously.
No, it's not.
It's the team.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Do they still have the old Cardinal Achievement Academy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. You're welcome.
Okay.
At this time, Madam President, members of the Board, this is the first reading of revised investment policy eight-point-zero-four. It's a first reading, so no vote is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I'd like to explain a little bit. Since our last update of the investment policy in two thousand and twelve, the higher legislature has expanded authority of asset classes for our consideration. The new asset class is the ability to purchase municipal debt based on a high-quality rating. I would also be required and will be taking additional training from the Treasurer of State's Office to be certified to make these types of investments. But typically, even though they're tax-free debt, municipalities pay a higher interest rate generally than we can get from federal securities or even state securities, so we're seeking authority to add that as an additional asset class. There were also changes as it related to commercial paper and banker's acceptance, extending maximum maturity from one-hundred-and-eighty days to two-hundred-and-seventy days, but limiting a little more so than the past, the percent of the portfolio that can be dedicated to either one of those investments. In fact, just this week, we purchased some commercial paper for the first time in a while, because it, slowly but surely, the investment returns are creeping upwards on that. So, without jeopardizing the general investment policy of safety, liquidity, and then return, we believe these changes to the investment policy will allow us to work on that return improvement without jeopardizing quality or liquidity. So, again, as Mr. Miller said, first reading tonight, but we're hopeful you'll give a favorable consideration.
Thank you. Next, Madam President, members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of agenda item C-one related to certified staff. C-two, C-three, and C-four are related to human resource matters, and D related to administrative staff.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes my part of the agenda.
Mr. Wilson, the business section?
Yes, you have before you a recommendation to approve an additional renewal of a lease for the Veterans Park. It's property we own adjacent to Shore Middle School. We have had a ten-year renewable lease with the Lake Metro Parks Board of Commissioners. This would be the third renewal of that lease. The lease is for one-dollar consideration, but we gain access to the improvements that the Metro Parks have put onto the property, and they're retaining the basic character of it. So, again, this would be the third renewal of this lease with the Metro Parks, so we're asking for your consideration.
So moved.
So, Dan, it's been twenty years since Lake Metro Park has been there?
Well, there's been two, the initial lease in nineteen-ninety-four, renewal in two thousand and four, and then this will be the third renewal.
So, to bring it up to thirty, it's been a fantastic improvement. I can recall going there, I'm not gonna say how many years ago, but it was not well-operated by the city, but the improvement when Lake Metro Park took it over, it turned it around. A lot of people visit there now, children play safely, walk the trails. I've gone fishing there once or twice.
We have classes that go there.
It's fantastic, it's been a great partnership. Thank you.
It's a dollar for all ten years? I just noticed it doesn't matter.
No, unfortunately, just one, one dollar.
One dollar for all ten years, okay.
A dime a year, I guess.
Okay. It's a perfect science laboratory for our students.
You're welcome.
Okay, ready for roll call.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you for the, my report, and I'll begin with the recommendation to approve the February two thousand sixteen financial statements and place them on file for audit.
Did you just jump me?
Well, I'm, yes, sir. I'm so excited to talk about the financials, my apologies.
It's like checkers king-ing. Not yet.
Mr. Tuttle, the legislative report?
Sorry, didn't mean to embarrass you, Dan.
That's okay.
I just had a little bit to read. I just wanna cover a couple paragraphs on the report that I gave you. So, the U.S. House Education Subcommittee holds the hearings on ESSA implementation of local governance. The House Education and Workforce Subcommittee in Early Childhood, Elementary, and Secondary Education convened a hearing in early February entitled, wait for it, "Next Steps for K-12 Education: Implementing the Promise to Restore State and Local Control." Subcommittee Chairman held this hearing to provide committee members and the public with information from state and local leaders on how to ensure that implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act restores state and local governance over K-12 education. With the passage of SA in December two thousand and fifteen, the law replaced "No Child Left Behind" with reforms that reduce the federal role in education in such areas as accountability and school improvement. I'm not gonna read any further. What's interesting is, and this is political commentary perhaps, or education comment, but outgoing president, "No Child Left Behind" was put in place by George Bush. New president will be leaving, the new program replaces "No Child Left Behind," so people can give up that name, don't refer to "No Child Left Behind" anymore, call it ESSA. Every Student Succeeds Act, so I just wanted to bring that out and let everybody know who might watch this on TV, "No Child Left Behind" is gone. So, that's all, I wanna make that note, and everybody now will know that. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
All right, thank you. I apologize, Mr. Tuttle. Recommend the financial statements for the month of February two thousand and sixteen be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
I just quickly note a couple things. One is, we've had a challenge with reconciling our books for the end of February, and we did not include the customary first section with the reconcile page. We're hopeful of having that done tomorrow. We missed our deadline Friday, or to bring it tonight. We don't believe there's any serious issues, but there's some elusive entry there we're still chasing down. Secondly, we are performing very close to expectations. Revenues are tracking precisely where they should be. Expenses right now were actually five-point-eight percent less than we were at the same point a year ago, and underperforming the budget with the positive variance also. We continue to have challenges with the federal government's flowing of money to the state of Ohio and ultimately to us for federally-funded competitive entitlement grants, so you'll note there are some fund deficits, and we are working and trying to time those up as much as we can. Our last major event, so we can begin to prepare the May update to the forecast and project year-end performance, will be the final settlement of the first-half real estate collections, which typically occur the first week in April. So, that's the one big unknown in our, status of our financial condition. But again, we, even though we are deficit spending, as we anticipated, the performance is right where it should be.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll.
Oh, who did the second?
Bill did the second.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson, I have to always tip my hat at your dedication to Thrift, that you've got us new cyber reliability coverage?
Yes.
Lower premium and fifty percent higher coverage.
Well, thank you.
It's a beautiful thing.
Good point. We worked hard on that, and again, we're very, we were one of the first districts in the state of Ohio to recognize the need for cyber liability insurance, given the penalties imposed by both federal and state law, and as the market has begun to have multiple major providers offering that coverage, we took advantage of that, and as you indicated, expanded our coverage. Hopefully, it's a claim we'll never file, but it's very challenging in this day and age, so thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you. You're doing excellent job.
It's recommended that the investment transactions for the month of February be ratified and as presented in Exhibit seven-b.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended that the approval of interfund transfers presented in Exhibit seven-c be approved.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit seven-d. in exhibit seven-d.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in exhibit seven-e.
So moved. Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the student activity goals and budgets presented in exhibit seven-f.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve an invoice presented for in exhibit seven-g.
So moved. Second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And it's recommend the Board of Education approve a resolution to certify tax rates for tax year sixteen, which will be collected in calendar year seventeen, as presented in exhibit seven-h.
So moved. Second.
And again, this is an annual process directed by the Lake County Budget Commission, reauthorizing the collection of previously-approved voter taxation based on the documented need in the tax budget that the Board adopted in January.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And that completes my report tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any unfinished business?
No.
Any new business? And hearing of the public? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Spehak. Come on up, please. [laughing]. If, if my math is right, I believe that this is Mrs. Spehak's one-hundred-and-fifty, give or take, board meetings that you have-
Gosh, I never answered them all.
I did today, and, and barring any last-minute board meetings, this will be her last board meeting. I know she doesn't preside over it, but in, in a lot of ways, she has-
Yes.
-over the last one-hundred-and-fifty-
Yes.
-board meetings. So this is a very special night for her. This is not my retirement speech for her, because we still have eleven days?
Eleven days.
Eleven days together, and I'll save it for them, but I do want to acknowledge your last board meeting. Well, we're sad for us, we're happy for you, and thrilled in a lot of ways. We're going to miss your smiling face. We, your, your sense of steady, your, your personality is always steady, you're never rattled, and we'll miss the baked goods that you bring into us periodically. You can still bring those, that's right.
I'm going to hold her, too.
I, I was lucky enough to come to Mentor in July of two thousand and twelve, and my very first day of being an employee at Mentor Schools, you were, I think even before my first day, official day, you provided me a binder of everything that I needed to know about my first few months on the job, and I still refer back to that binder probably on at least a monthly basis. Paulette was nice enough, when I, when I first got here, to host me at your house, you and Ms. Godick, and were, were nice enough to essentially tell me the way things really were upon my arrival in the district. I learned about guardian, gardening from you two. Still, I'm not any good at it. I learned to love my dogs more from you, and just your sense of, of how much you love your children, only eclipsed by probably your grandchildren. Paulette, I, I like to think that as much as she has helped me, I helped her this much. She now has a cellphone that's not a cricket.
Oh, wow.
And, and that was sort of a labor of love with her daughter Emily and I exchanging messages on social media with one another about what to get her, so she could see those pictures of her grandkids and share those pictures of her grandkids with the rest of us.
Dead in my purse?
If you didn't catch that, she just said her phone is dead in her purse. Right now, so I should probably get that out. But this isn't, this isn't the retirement, this is just congratulations on one-hundred-and-fifty board meetings. We're very excited for you, very happy for you, and I'm looking forward to the next eleven days, not the eleventh day, maybe the next ten, but we're very happy for you. Congratulations. We have two tokens of appreciation from the Board of Education, from Dan and I. And we also have something for you that does not go to everybody, but to those who have made a long-lasting impact on the students and staff at Mentor Schools are, are Crystal Cardinal.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
I've always wanted to do this. [laughing]. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, it's been a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good.
[applause] Thank you. Thank you.